Will I please stand and our councilman Curtis Central will say the page to the flag. And I mean, excuse me, give your certification and we'll all say the page to the flag.
That's right. Lord, we thank you for being a loving God and Lord, we thank you for everyone's living. Society gives us the freedom of all gathering, share our opinions and, you know, we live as unity as a city. Our Lord, we ask you to help us make the decisions of Memphis, all the citizens today. Our Lord, after meeting, if we want to partake in food, we ask that you bless this food and this nourish our body. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I'd like to thank the membership of the first A B for hosting us here tonight for our second chat and meet. We're looking forward to doing this two more times very soon and then we will do it probably on a quarterly basis, is that right, fifty? After that, after we get all four awards included. It's been a great, great opportunity for us and we appreciate y'all letting us be here. Welcome everybody that's coming. All right, I think Mr. Terrell Brown is here and would y'all like to get up and address council?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Terrell Brown. I'm with the Freedoms Path Development Team that is redeveloping the two buildings on the Carl Vinson VA Medical Center campus in Dublin, Georgia. And we just wanted to, me and Craig Taylor here, Craig Taylor is the president of Solutions for Veterans. Solutions for Veterans is the service provider for the development community. And we just wanted to come and give you an update on the Freedoms Path Development, Freedoms Path Dublin, and how we can get your help to ensure that Freedoms Path Dublin is a reality for Dublin, Georgia and all U.S. military veterans. So here's Kirk Taylor.
Thank you, Terrell. Proud Marine here. We're a, I'm a wimpy Air Force guy, so. Good to be here. Let me just real quickly bring y'all up to date on where things are. We were awarded preferred developer status to redevelop the two buildings, Building Thirty-four and Thirty-five on the campus. I know all of y'all see the broken down buildings as you got down there in Boulevard. We have been delayed in doing that because that campus was nominated to be a National Historic District. And until that worked its way through, the whole federal bureaucracy, the National Park Service, Department of the Interior, we did not do anything with those buildings. That was finally approved as a National Historic District in 2019, early, and then we had to go back and register those two buildings or were individual listing on the National Register Historic Places. And we got that approval about two months ago. So that now opens the way for us to move forward with the development. The historic credits bring a source of financing. You can get historic credits on the building. Those are then sold to an investor and that brings in equity to the project. And so this project has two sources of funding that are being looked at. One would be the historic credit equity. The other is housing tax credits, which are administered through the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. And those are done annually, so the next round won't be until May of 2020. And so one of the options we have is to wait until May 2020, put in an application, and then we would not know until about this time next year in 2020. However, there is a way to get the Commissioner of DCA to approve a set aside for a project of significance to the citizens of the state of Georgia. And this was, it's called the general set aside, and this was initiated in 2018. And in 2018, the Commissioner set aside these tax credits for a project in Decatur, Georgia, thirty-four units being developed by the Decatur Housing Authority called Trinity Wall Three. Great, they got those units built. Then in 2019, they set aside not only credits for 2019, but credits for 2020 as well. Two million dollars worth of credits for a project to be developed in Underground Atlanta. Underground Atlanta has been redeveloped at least three times that I know of in the history, and they're trying to redevelop it again. And so there was a housing component to that. And so the state allocated two million dollars worth of credits to that project. Again, great, tourism, it's all good, you know, we bring folks to Georgia and everything. But in our opinion, what could be a greater priority in the state of Georgia than to take care of our veterans, especially our veterans who are still struggling with some of the hidden wounds of war and are being treated right here at the Carl Vinson Center? So the idea behind this property is it's private sector developed, but it's on the VA campus. As a veteran is treated at the VA in the domiciliary program or in the outpatient mental health program, and they are released from those programs and they have no identifiable place to go, they would be able to move into this housing right there on the campus, continue to get services through the VA, as well as be provided services with education and job development and training and personal counseling and so forth, right there in the property, and have a stable living environment in which they are living with other veterans who, more than anybody else, know what it means to serve and know what it means to make the sacrifices that they have made. And that is proven to be invaluable. We've done this in eight other locales around the country. Chicago, Illinois, Kerrville, Texas, Vancouver, Washington, Helen, Montana, Chillicothe, Ohio, Augusta, Georgia. We're doing a second phase in Clines, Illinois. So we know what we're doing. We've been very successful doing that, and we're really excited about the prospects of being able to do it here in Dublin. But we need help, and the help we need is for the Commissioner of the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to do a general set aside of six hundred thousand dollars of housing tax credits for the Freedoms Path at Dublin project. And with that, we'll get a bill to move our housing, these deserved ones. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for the opportunity. I'm certain we'll be answering questions if you feel like any way.
How many units are in this unit?
It would be fifty units. Forty-four in the two historic buildings, and those would all be studio apartments for one person. And then we would build one six-unit building, new construction, behind Building Thirty-five, between the building and where the cars are parked there for inpatient at the VA Center. And that would be two veteran units, and that would be for veterans with a child. And that's a, with more and more women serving, what we're finding is that there is about ten percent of all the vets that we serve are female, and it becomes extremely problematic if they have a child. Where do you find housing? So we want to segregate it from the other property. In that sense, we want to have a separate building that we can secure and so forth, that they can work with each other and, you know, help with childcare and parenting and all those kinds of things and build that kind of collegiality as well in that community. So fifty units.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know when we toured the facility, the flow outside of the financial concerns that you were mentioning, it would get past the other hurdles that was holding us up at that time?
Yes, sir. It gets all complicated and everything. The buildings are in bad, bad shape. They have environmental problems. Because they are being renovated to the National Park Service Historic Preservation Standards, there are fairly high levels of requirements in terms of renovating a property, which makes it very expensive to do. And if we're going to preserve those buildings and we're going to do this, we just have to do it. But we've identified all of those issues, we've cost out the project, and we've identified how to manage it. We just need to get, the final piece is getting that allocation of tax credits, and we'll go from there and get it done. But yes, sir, we've solved all the other problems.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank y'all very much. It's, I tell you, it's a great project. We wish you much success and thank you, Chris, for listening to you.
Yes, sir. And we thank you for your support, and for all of our support.
We look forward to seeing the finished project.
Hello, I'm Philip Parker.
And I'm Counselor Guyton.
And the company is Ashton Enterprises, Inc., and we're looking for local drivers in your area.
The requirements are Class A CDS, a clean MVR, clean drug stream, and twit card preferred.
Here at Ashton, being home with family is very important to us, so we offer our drivers to be home every evening. We offer competitive pay. We have locations ranging from Sandersville to Savannah to Augusta.
Call us at four seven eight five nine five six eight four six.
Or four zero four four three six zero 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 two. And remember, this could be the job opportunity that you've been looking for.
Jeff Sheppard here at Roach Farm and Garden. Deer season is here. Come to see us at Roach Farm and Garden, we got all your deer hunting necessities. And we carry five-way, three-way, harvest advantage, Orion clay peas, wheats and oats, Dakon radishes, a Bruiser rye, and Big Boss rye, buck forage, and annual rye. We will make your food plots look right. We have all your supplies of deer feed, seventeen and twenty-four percent protein, QDM and 4S. We even carry 4S draw in the block and bags. And when you get that deer, we've got something to cook him with, from grills to griddles to your deep fryers. You want clothes? We got a full line of Georgia boot, Rocky boot, and all the Carhartt that you could need. And for your pelletized grill, we have any flavor you need. We have ladder stands by Millennium and Ammerstep, replacement seats, protein blocks, salt blocks, and attractants, and a full line of coolers. And don't forget to pick your supply up a voodoo while you in there, it's at the counter. Don't forget, everything you need for deer season is right here at Roach Farm and Garden. Two locations, Wrightsville and Dublin.
Okay, we're now going to regular agenda of the first order of business to approve of October third, two thousand nineteen, City Council Meeting Minutes.
Seven.
Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Johnson, is that right?
Yes.
Approved and minutes, any discussion? You know, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Out of number two is approval of bills of three thousand dollars.
What question, what deal, sir?
Seven. Got a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on that? Hear none, all those in favor say aye. No opposed, motion carries. We have three items to approve on the purchases that Council had no problem with it. We'll discuss all three and vote on them at one time, if they're right with y'all. Okay. But John?
The first one is in addition to our contract for grounds maintenance, currently Greensgate does that for us, the head of law, there are areas that we need, and we can get away with prison crews to do that, and it's actually cheaper to get Greensgate to do it. The cost of this is to add the New Jackson Street Plaza to that contract, annual cost is eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Any questions about that? Next one is for voting machine testing. Mr. Brad Calder is the person who does this. It's required by Secretary of State that he calibrate and program and the clerk can elaborate on this.
Logic and accuracy of the machines.
Make sure when you punch the button, it says what you did by. He has done this for us in the past, the cost of his service is six thousand six hundred dollars. The last item for purchase is a tree spade. We have a lot of tree plantings coming up around the city. We have a lot of projects, like USA beautification there. And being able to do this ourselves with our new Bobcat that y'all purchased will, this attachment to it, we don't have to buy a whole new piece of equipment. And it's very expensive to hire this gun from somebody, but this, we think this piece of equipment will pay for itself very quickly. The cost of this tree spade attachment is twenty-two thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-nine cent from Bobcat. This is a single source piece of equipment, so we didn't have to get bids on it, it costs the same from everywhere.
Man, someone says the cost per tree, how are they about to do this?
Well, it varies. Two trees were planted in front of the city halls. The trees were three hundred dollar a piece, three hundred dollars a piece just for the tree, but then it was about eighteen hundred dollars a piece it would have been, and that was what we got to plant. It was what we, I believe, Mr. Tim Lake, Lake Environmental, planted those as a gift to the city. But it's, that's what it would have cost us, what it had to take with it.
Yeah, Council, do you have any questions, any comments?
This is how I'd like to make a remark to that we stepped all ready, purchased recommended by the state.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Johnson and a second by Mr. Jones to approve the purchases, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I think we've got four or five first readings here that we will go through as brief as we can be. Out of number four, out of number four, the first reading of an ordinance to establish a restaurant district in certain areas of downtown Dublin. Mr. Jones?
This is ordinance, an ordinance by the Mayor and Council of the City of Dublin to establish a restaurant district in certain areas of downtown Dublin, to amend section twenty dash three oh seven regarding sidewalk cafes, to repeal and replace section four dash twenty-nine regarding alcohol and seed property, with set an effective date for other lawful purposes.
Yeah, our second reading and public hearing on this proposed ordinance will be at our November eleventh meeting, oh, excuse me, November seventh meeting. I knew it was thinking my mind up. Okay, out of number five is the first reading of an ordinance to establish permitting and regulations for mobile food service units in the city of Dublin.
This is ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two, an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Dublin to establish permitting and regulations for mobile food service units in the city of Dublin, to establish effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay, the second reading, public hearing on that one will also be at our November seventh meeting. Item number six is first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to allow mobile food service units within certain zoning districts.
This is an ordinance by the Mayor and Council of the City of Dublin, amending the zoning ordinance to allow mobile food service units within certain zoning districts of the city to define new terms, provide for effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay. And final first reading is out of number seven, first reading of an ordinance, D N X in point two four acres, more or less, located at twenty-seven thirty-six Highway two fifty-seven, Dublin, Georgia.
This is ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-three, an ordinance by the Mayor and Council of the City of Dublin, D N X in front of the municipality of the City of Dublin, Georgia, zero point two four acres, more or less, previously annexed as B two highway-oriented business zone. Said property is located at two seven three six Highway two fifty-seven, Dublin, Georgia.
Okay, and as we said, that was the final book. Public hearing and second reading will be at our November seventh meeting. Okay, out of number eight, is discussion interaction on the resolution approving an intergovernmental contract with the Dublin Downtown Development Authority for the management and operation of certain city properties.
This is resolution number nineteen dash twenty-nine, resolution of the Mayor, Council of the City of Dublin to approve intergovernmental contract at Dublin Downtown Development Authority for the management and operation of certain city properties, set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. This is a contract extending the DDA's management contracts to the New Jackson Street Plaza, and we combined all those contracts and took the points out of the city.
Okay. Any questions on that, or go ahead, Mr. Jones?
Public having any problems with getting them, getting out to DDA or probably in the big city contact the city to get help or something?
Yes, sir. Anybody on the, that could reach out certainly to the city, to me in particular, and to anyone on the DDA board.
Any other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the resolution? Second. Got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Edwards to approve, is that right? Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Edwards to approve the resolution, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, out of number nine is discussion interaction on the resolution approving the cafeteria plan for the City of Dublin effective January February first, two thousand nineteen.
And our city attorney dropped out to answer the questions we have, but this is approving our cafeteria plan document. We have a cafeteria plan where employees can choose different benefits, the plan document is necessary for the plan to be tax deductible, or where they can pay their, we can pay them benefits and they can pay them for those benefits for pre-tax dollars. So this gets the strike with our, it's our most heavy problem.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve that resolution?
So do.
Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Griggs to approve the resolution, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, out of number ten, is discussion interaction on award of a bid to McClinton Enterprises, Inc., for the Hillcrest Parkway widening improvement project.
Yeah, this is our biggest transportation improvement act project, and it's for the widening and improvement of Hillcrest, Hillcrest Boulevard, I'm sorry, starting on four forty-one North, going all the way through, all the way over to industrial, we have sidewalks, we don't have that sidewalks, turning lanes, everything will be much safer. The low bidder was McClinton Enterprises of Potavium, Georgia, and now ten million seven hundred three thousand two hundred thirty-four dollars and sixteen cents. They are ready and very much able to get, ready to get started.
Mayor, we're ready to show them that state from Dublin, because they want to probably do a better job.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Stop it.
Got a motion by Mr. Davidson, the second by Mr. Brown to approve the project, any discussion? Mr. Jones, do you have a question?
On that project, that project's paid for through the T-spots, right?
Yes, sir. It'll be, we believe, we have some money to conserve, but they don't pay for it, but it does not, but we believe that T-spots will more and more than cover the cost of this project.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Hi, I'm Jeff Cannon, President, Citizens Bank of Lawrence County. If you're presently a customer of ours, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to be your bank. We appreciate the confidence you have placed in us and enjoy providing you with the most up-to-date banking products and services to satisfy your needs. If you're not a current customer, we would like to invite you to stop by and let us show you true community banking at its best. We concentrate on our local community, doing our part to make Dublin and Lawrence County a better place to live, work, play, and retire. We recently introduced two new products, e-statements and Access Now, our mobile banking app. Both of these products will help to make banking with us more convenient and will also help to provide you with a safer and more secure banking experience. So for all your banking needs, just give us a call or stop by and let us show you personal banking at its best. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
I'm Glenn Registered, Hometown Supply. Come by today and let me show you all the different product lines that we carry. Just about anything that you need, we have it in stock. This is our battery line. We have lawn and garden batteries, batteries for four-wheelers, battery chargers, jumper cables, jump boxes. Bring in the type vehicle you need, something to fit, and ninety-nine percent of the time we got a battery to fit. As long as it's interstate, it still has warranty on it, no matter where it was bought. We replace it. We have tires for passenger cars, for trucks. We got three warehouses full of used tires. Most of the time, you come in with a size, in the morning, we can have it this afternoon for you. Come by and let me show you what sets us apart from all the rest. If you can't do business here, you just can't do business.
Okay, here we're now to citizens comments, and I know we do have two different groups that particularly want to speak to council, and then we'd like to, the E one that wants to speak, the two that are here, Mr. Thomas and Mr. Thomas Wheeler, and the other group that, the top group.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Congresswoman, Congresswoman and citizens. I am Thomas Wheeler, property owner, they have two boroughs, street, Dublin, Georgia. Property was, I guess, was against, property was moved life on October second, October second, twenty nineteen, under the city ordinance. I'm here today to speak about ordinance being of Constitution. One of these issues, issue that I'm speaking of is that the, I have a package, do you ever get a package? The Constitution basically, which is for the, which everybody has, basically allows for it to be redeveloped and, when it says it, ordinance may, but shall not be required to segregate revenues arising from any increased rate of adverbary taxes and provided for use of such revenues only for community redevelopment purposes. However, the city ordinance says that it can be placed in the general fund. That's direct conflict to the judge's constitution, and so it's unconstitutional. See, the city, like, ordinance basically says that on page, page four, on page four, it says that the revenue raised from the increased rate of adverbary taxes shall be placed in the general fund of the city of Dublin, which is a direct conflict to the Constitution, and as a result, makes your ordinance, ordinance unconstitutional. In addition, I have other cities, cities of America. I have the city of, in terms of city's surveillance, ordinance, it will say on page number two, I believe, it says revenues raised from the increased rate of adverbary taxes shall upon receipt be segregated by the city manager and used only for community redevelopment purposes, in line with the state constitution. I also have the ordinance from, off any, I believe that's, I'm trying to get everybody to do all this. On page number, let me see, page number, this is on the last page, which is page number two, every revenue collected from increases in rate of adverbary taxes shall be segregated and applied to community redevelopment purposes. That's exactly what's in the Constitution. So just looking at best practices, city of Dublin, you develop one in regards to that. In addition to that, then the city's ordinance, they require some kind of automatic, automatic, I believe, automatic ruling of light, if you don't send in the, return the, the request, you don't, if you don't request a hearing after you have received a notice, that if you don't send that back in, they automatically file an increase. increase to the, uh, and determine that you have a black tax. That's also unconstitutional, and as a result, the law, an art ordinance is unconstitutional. So, moving right along, I hope that you take the law down, remove it, all the proceedings that you started and stopped, um, in my case, we dismiss the case, um, knock it up, and everybody else does the same, you, um, set everything back to start, and if you want to bring it back up again, I believe that you need to have a community redevelopment plan that is in place. You don't have one, for what I'm concerned. I was shocked that we got asked one, and for a city of this size, if you don't have a planning department, you don't have a comprehensive planning plan to take, take, take care of the situation, it's not like, it's like not having a police department. Okay, you decide you won't have a police department, okay? If you do, you will say, let's go back to nineteen fifty. In nineteen fifty, now you got both police officers, two dogs, and you got six children. It's totally inadequate for today's standard. No way you can plan a city, if you're trying to be progressive and, and succeed without planning department, without a comprehensive redevelopment community plan, you cannot do that. Last but least, uh, we that was pretty much it, I think, you know, I think it'd be sort of, you take, take your organs down, you set aside those people that have been judged, and, uh, don't bring it back until you get a comprehensive redevelopment plan, a planning department, like a city of your size, and start making plans to make it sort of better. Now, right now, you're gonna speak about this downtown, basically, just sort of kind of got a Confederate legacy program going down with some Jim Crow buildings that has been redeveloped, okay? When it moves forward, you want people to say, hey, we want to be progressive, okay? In that package, we had ideas of putting, well, they got roaches in there now, it's supposed to be a hotel, uh, main brand hotel, amphitheater, shops, all this kind of stuff, what people are doing now near the river, versus contaminating the river with fertilizer and all kind of toxic waste. This is not good for a major city, when you already have a plan in place to put a hotel there, a safe use. So, actually, at this point, I'm not sure, but, uh, we're gonna have to reverse that and make our river a safe place. Thank you.
Is your internet slowing your business down? If so, call the city of Dublin for our fiber optic-based internet, four seven eight, two nine six, one zero zero eight.
It's that time of year, time to fire up the grill, relax, and have some fun. Whether you're a grill master or wannabe, the Big Green Egg will change the way you think about cooking. Georgia Pools has a large selection from which to choose. They carry a wide variety of accessories too, from charcoal starters to grilling tools, seasonings, and sauces. Get your own Big Green Egg cooking system for as low as fifty-eight eighty-three per month. And while you're waiting on that perfect steak to cook, relax in your very own Pauley's Island habit. What better way to spend the summer days ahead? When you're thinking of grilling and chilling, think Georgia Pools, located at twelve oh one Hillcrest Parkway in Dublin. Call Georgia Pools at two seven five, thirty-six oh seven.
Okay, are you gonna be speaking to the council? I'm sorry.
Hello. My name is Clarissa Van. I have been in Dublin hairdresser for forty-six years now. In nineteen ninety-seven, I was paying sixty-five dollar business licenses. All of a sudden, I don't know if you remember me speaking to you about this, my shop went from paying, paying sixty-five dollars to everybody in the shop paying a hundred, which made my shop go to eight hundred dollars. That was a pretty hefty raise, okay? A few years later, you take home twenty-five dollars to it. I didn't realize at that time it was an instruction fee, I thought you were just going up on it. And I realized, it's been twenty-two years. When I talked to you, I was told that we were in line with the other towns around us. Wrong. Dublin, Georgia has the highest business license that anybody around here. I've done all the investigating. I don't know what town y'all compared us with. I would think maybe Vidalia. Uh, the highest one is from One Robinson's. Theirs is a hundred and five. Some places, each hairdresser does quite. Most places, it's own the business, and it's done by the number of employees, by the number of people renting, what, is the number of employees. In our business, and for some reason, now our business license has owner on it, and we're not even an owner. I mean, it's kind of ridiculous. You sell one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six business licenses, and you went up across the board, one hundred dollars on everybody. That's a pretty hefty raise. I wish when one of you come to my shop and said, hang on, I could tell you, your haircut's going up a hundred dollars today. I don't think you'd do that. I think you'd find somewhere else to go. And I'm here today representing the hairdressers, the barbers, the cosmetologist teacher, and the, uh, uh, permanent makeup people. We are all individually taxed. Years ago, when I taught you, I assumed everybody that held a state license was paying that hundred dollars. I learned it's mostly hairdressers. We're all taxed individually. You got the treasure store, you got the international market, everybody in their wrist of boot, just like I do. They don't pay two hundred and twenty-five dollars for a hundred and twenty-five dollars. There's no other town on that paper that has a twenty-five dollar and instruction fee. I walked in the city hall with my check, my paper already filled out every year, I had to show identification. I've been here forty-six years, I think after forty-six years, you ought to know who I am, and it ought to be in your computer. I shouldn't have to pay that twenty-five dollar fee, just for you to take my check. To me, we've been being overcharged for twenty-two years. I think, being I pay it every year on time, it's never been late, I've never complained, I would have been getting twenty-five dollars back for what I got. But no, you punish the people that do what they're supposed to do, you don't give us any break. And then, you got, you got beauty shops with thirteen people in them that's paying more than Cracker, more than Walmart. Oh, then, that is not fair to us. I rent a chair, I don't own, I don't own a chair, I don't own a mat, all I own is a blender, a curling iron, and some supplies, that's it. And going up a hundred dollars on all this business, you can look at that piece of paper, making charges sixty-five dollars for a business license. And I don't think probably the only person we're comparing to there is maybe Vidalia, maybe Swainford, maybe? You know, I, I just don't get it. Where in the world did y'all get this from? I mean, you know, I'm sorry, y'all laid water and gas pipe out to a business and decided to take off and leave you holding it there, you know? But that's not our place to have to pay that. If I don't have money, I don't have, I don't write a check. And just like the little girl in this town that started doing partner eye work, do you have any idea how many women in this town go to Atlanta to have it done? I mean, do you have any idea? Because it was a hit. And then she's working on her business license, and all of a sudden, you go in and say, hey, you got to pay a thousand dollars, this is tattooed. This girl went to school, she had to take a state test, and one of the things they're gonna notice, she gonna have to pay that thousand dollars every year, or is that a one night thing? She's not a tattoo shop that's set up on the corner, and I'm not throwing it in the store or anything, this girl had to go to school to learn to do this. And you got a couple more shops in town that's willing to do that, but these girls can't pay a thousand dollars? And it's just like Miss Paddle's girls that's getting out of school, they can't pay two hundred and twenty-five dollars for a business license? I mean, they're barely making it. They're going into a shop and it takes them two or three years to build up the business. I mean, it's ridiculous. The state only charges us sixty-five dollars, uh, fifty dollars, excuse me, fifty dollars every ten years, you know? And I'm sure they'll probably be going up too, but, and not only that, you sell one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six business licenses, but I guarantee you that's too much more business out there that don't have them. And when I go down and pay for my business license, and I say, what are you gonna do to these people that don't pay? Oh, we go back on for a year, but why don't I up here for ten years and then have, only have to pay for the third? No, you gonna call me up because I've been paying it every year, and you gonna say, either you gonna get it out here, or we gonna write you a citation. So, I think as hairdressers, and I, it was my stupidity for not going in twenty-two years ago and finding out that we were the ones that was being zinged over the end. But I rent a chair, if I rent a chair, this little boutique that's got people coming in and putting up businesses in that boutique, or the treasure store that they ran out of food, then they gonna pay two hundred and twenty-five dollars to it. But if you look at that piece of paper, we have been getting overcharged, and I'm speaking for every business owner in this town, and all of these hairdressers in this room. I personally, and most of these people can tell you, black and white, want in every beauty shop, every barber in this town, and handed them this piece of paper, and said, please come to this thing. I said, I was told, come to the council meeting if you want to run. Run. I don't live in this city, so I can't run, but it is obvious to me tonight that we need to find one or two females to sit on this hold, and I promise you, I will be working on it big time. You know, I can't vote, and I can't run, but I promise you, every one of these hairdressers in this town, and this will have at least ten to fifteen people that sit in their chairs every day, we're your best advertisement or we're your worst. That's all of that, so, thank you for listening.
Dublin Ford Lincoln's favorite part about serving our community is all of the wonderful friendships that we build, and Ty Martinez is one of those friends.
I asked for a truck, and I couldn't ask for anything better. I mean, when he got the truck, it was exactly what I wanted, and they went, I think this one came from Tennessee, you know, got out of town and rugged, rugged to me. Oh, come Dublin Ford, you know, check them out before you check anybody else out.
Others call you customers, we call you friends, that's Dublin Ford Lincoln.
Portions of this program are brought to you by Fairview Park Hospital, a leader in health care for Dublin, Lawrence, and surrounding communities, providing specialty services through facilities such as our sleep center, heart center, and women's imaging center.
All right, does anyone else like to address counsel?
Yes, I'm coming on behalf of, uh, the, uh, Cross the Street Cemetery, once again. Uh, I'm a disabled veteran myself, and we've been having the murder day programs down there. I only have one trash can, you know, I consider that my place of solitude, and I rode through, there's only two city cemeteries, I love when we got plenty, but I, one trash can, yeah, I'll put the trash can down there, I'll keep it empty and, and put the bag in it. But people that was on that, over to the committee is dying out, Ross O'Brien, people going, going on, and I cross the road, I would kind of get up. So, it is a city cemetery, I'm asking one more time, put a trash can down at the Cross the Street Cemetery. Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, if it's on the order, we order the same kind of trash cans we have down there, we don't keep those in stock, so there's, there's a special place to order from, it's on the order, it's there.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to add, like to address counsel? Okay, if not, we'll go to counsel, counsel, and, and, and.
I think the Lord, the government, and, uh, the great thing with the city council, which you can't tell, and just thank you for picking us, go ahead and be on our role, we opened up the COVID comment, and there's a lot of things behind the scenes that the city's running, and other, other things the cities have that is involved with this, but they do it for revenues and all, so we have my convention, but, 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 but. But I thank, I thank everyone for coming, and, uh, I hope everyone has a safe week.
Also, I'd like to, thank you everybody for coming, and I'm delighted to be having a meeting here, uh, First AB Church, this is a, an historic place in, in, uh, throughout the Dublin of this whole region of the country. So, uh, I encourage you to come and voice your opinion, uh, we consider all these things, we, we, we will consider, and hopefully we'll make some good decisions. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, man, thank everyone for coming out, um, like, like, people opening their doors, while chatting truth, and expressing, I thank everyone for expressing their opinions, we will take it hard, taking, we will take this in heart, I do understand your concern, and, and we're touched by you just coming, so, thank you, it's not going on death for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I too, we're just like that, what's been said, thank everybody for being here, thank you First AB Church for again opening your doors, uh, this is a beautiful location, uh, a pillar in the community, uh, also, to those that did speak on behalf of, uh, Mr. Wheeler and also the Capitol talk, thank you for your comments, and we'll consider that.
I want to thank everybody for coming, also, also want to thank, uh, First AB for hosting this council meeting, I think it's a good thing to bring the council to the community, it's been very well attended, the two districts that we hosted them, so forth, District One and District Two, and I want to thank everybody, the citizens, for voicing their opinions about, uh, the different things that the council had done, and, uh, those things that you come, voice your opinion, uh, is brought to our attention of things that we might have to do some adjustments on, we'll certainly look at it, and then we, uh, as a council, we'll decide to do, uh, what's right, so, uh, uh, we would, uh, again, I want to thank everybody for attending.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, uh, this will be my last meeting with this group, as far as, uh, in the community, because of the holiday season, and, uh, this is my last term on council. I've been going, um, my twenty years on council, and I really, uh, would like to thank First AB for allowing us to use this place tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, uh, all the comments that were made, I certainly appreciate that, it's good to hear what people are thinking, and I'd like to thank the folks at First AB for letting us come in here, and I hope everybody has a great week.
Mr. Powell?
No comments.
But then?
No comments.
Nothing, man.
Yes, right.
I want to tell Mr. Van, or something, your secretary is awesome. Matter of fact, I think she's one we need to get one.